Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic, and to the Saint One Nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Cindy's up first.
A few updates. So we are working on procurement side for a comp plan grant application through OPRAs. So the change with OPRAs is that you have to procure the firm you're going to utilize before you apply for the grant. And so basically, we advertise that and it's saying we would award if the grant is received. So there's no promise unless the application's accepted. So all of the proposals were due last Friday by 4:00 PM. Brandy's indicated the office received one proposal, and that was from American Structure Point. They did the previous comp plan. So at this point, what we had hoped to do is have a small committee review the proposals. Since there's only one, there's not really anything to compare it to, but if you still would like to do a phone interview with the firm, we can set that up with them. And kind of go from there. So depending on what you guys want to do, do you, are you, do you have a couple people that would be willing to do the review? Shouldn't take very long.
I think Park and Dave would be happy to do it.
Yeah. We've got a lot of work when they get back.
Yeah.
When does it need to be reviewed by?
We have it set to review by the 20th.
Our next meeting.
Okay.
The next meeting. So, you know, if I take less than 30 minutes, we'll try to do everything on the same night you have meetings.
I can, and I'm going to assume one of them can.
Okay.
Unless you want to. You want to.
Do you want to do a review prior to the meeting, or do you want to try to get together if it works out? What's best?
Either whatever works out best.
Okay.
I'm pretty open, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if we can plan on 4:30, if that works for you guys, then we'll just knock it out ahead of the meeting and be done.
On the 20th?
On the 20th, yep. And just a little bit more information. So that will take care of the review, the procurement side of things. The application itself is due in the middle of May, like May 19th. So that's when we actually apply for the grant funding. The grant funding in total allows you to ask for a maximum of $60,000. And there's a 10% match with that particular grant. So we'll just keep everybody up to date.
Structure Point did our last one.
Yes.
And when was it? 2019?
In 2007. Or, excuse me, 17.
Oh.
The county was seven, this one was seven. Yeah, yours is in 17.
Okay. Okay.
And then, OPRAs sent the award letter via email, I think to Brandy and Dave today for the water grant. So congratulations, Town of Rockville, on your $700,000 grant to help with the water system improvements. Kind of what happens now, as we're waiting on the finalized agreement to come through the state for the town to sign, there's a lot of stuff on my end that I'll be doing. There'll be advertising that the award was received and you attend to receive. So there'll be another publication in the newspaper, legal notice. I just emailed that to Brandy. So if people are asking us just if there's any concerns again about the project itself, they can write or email Brandy. So that will be in the paper. In the meantime, we'll make sure that we have all the environmental review information to OPRAs. And I think that'll get us covered up until the point in time that that agreement comes through.
Great.
That's where we are with that. And then, I don't know how familiar you are, if Park's talked much about the asset management plant for the wastewater. That was a requirement for the regional wastewater project, for the Town of Rockville to have that plant. And it's something you should have anyway, so it's really good that we kind of got pushed to the point where we had to get it done. So I have everything, but just a little bit of information. And I just want to state that Rogers R. and Bruce specifically with UMAC have really stepped up to get the information, and Brandy and Mandy from the office. So everybody kind of pitched in to hurry, hurry for hurry on this thing. So I think what we're going to do, as soon as I get that drafted, is we're going to meet after the 17th of March with Engineer and with UMAC, just to kind of review it, see if we've got any holes in it, and make sure that we have a clean plan to submit. And those are my big updates unless you have questions.
I don't. Anybody?
Do you want me to talk about the resolution?
Yeah, I didn't put that under your stuff, but if you don't mind, if you want to go ahead and just briefly explain that, if you want that signed this evening.
So, under Brandy's, it has the resolution 2023-03 for the SRF loan. This is not that the Town of Rockville is taking out a loan through SRF. What this document is, it goes along with the regional project that's being discussed. For us to move forward and ask for funding as a regional project, we had to have an entity in which we could say is the applicant. And Park had been okay with utilizing Rockville as that applicant just to get the project on the list. So it requires a resolution to be submitted with this application. And again, it's not committing you to any loans or any funding, any out-of-pocket expense. So we need, at that moment, to have a resolution.
Make a, you made the motion. I'll, if you fall in favor.
Aye.
And I'll get that. Cindy prepared that out. All I did was put a resolution number on that. But I'll get it signed, and if you want, I can go into the template and change that. If you want Melissa's signature on it tonight, or I can get Dave's signature in the next couple of days probably, just on wherever.
Let's go ahead and do the signatures of these here tonight.
Okay.
And I will need two originals.
Okay. I'll do that real quick in just a minute.
Yeah, I can get that from you later, Brandy, when that's done.
Okay.
Okay, that's all for me.
Thank you.
All right. You've got claims for review for 643, 642, 78. I don't know if you have any questions on those. I haven't looked through them in detail quite yet on this report, but.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
There's a sign sheet for that. Cindy took care of the resolution. Oh, I've got a copy of minutes from the February 20th meeting. For signatures and approval, please.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, the only other thing I did have, we do have in our paperwork to award the Community Crossings Grant, that we had the bid opening on Friday morning. We did just receive one bid from Milestone Contractors. That bid is for the portion of North Michigan Street. And it was in the amount of $106,250. So that is the only proposal for that, if you want to make a motion to move forward.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll take care of getting the notice to proceed paperwork to them as well this week. So that's all I have.
Move right along. Nick's gone. He's not going to be here tonight, Bill?
So I will seek clarification from Nelsons and ask for detailed itemized invoices. And maybe you can contact Nick and.
Is this, so we're no longer in business with them?
We did away with them last month.
Okay.
And I believe that's.
What an interesting timing.
Probably a good plan.
Also, we had that town ordinance that everybody emailed out. I didn't know if we needed a reservation or something, if you guys were willing to have Nick amend it. There's a, already an ordinance, Schedule Four, or Chapter 74, Schedule Four, that discusses that street, but it doesn't actually discuss the street where we need the no parking app. So I think that ordinance needs amended so that we can have no parking along the grade school parking lot.
Oh, right. I'll make a motion. We have Nick amend that ordinance.
Second.
All in favor?
Did you, was I on that email?
I can.
Do you have the number?
When I look it up on the website, it says Schedule Four, or Chapter 74, Schedule Four, is what it says on the website when you go to the.
Will you just get with me tomorrow, and I'll print the information for Nick, so I can let him know that that's what we need done?
We're just adding those two streets during school hours.
Okay.
I've provided you guys with a copy of Lucky Gunner ammo.
And you said Brandy had somewhere we could get that for it? You said, told him there was somewhere we could get that money from?
Oh, yes.
The continuing education?
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right now, I have a couple officers looking at grants, as long as you guys are still good with us going ahead and going forward with it through Walmart to get some cages for the two Tavos. I will continue to do that. No, we're keeping the Tavos. I'm already in communication with Monizuma Police Department, and they have a cage that's no longer beneficial to them because they don't have the vehicle. So we're looking at possibly acquiring that cage to put in the one car that we're keeping. So then we would have every car with a cage in it. This year, we've had 34 criminal investigations, for a total of 52 for the year. We had 27 this time last year, potentially violent cases. We had 16 this month, had 23 for the year. Had 472 calls for service. Last year, we had 235 at this time. Had two towed vehicles, and we had zero last year at this time. Had two incidents, had seven last time, last year. 15 arrests this year, 13 last year. We've had seven alarms, six of those being invoiced, one was demoted due to it being a first time. ECWS, and this can get kind of confusing when you look at those, because sometimes with ECWS, you may have a citation or a felony and a warning on the same entry. So when you look at 32 entries and you see those numbers don't add up to 32, sometimes there's more than one of each on one of those entries. We had 12 felonies, had one in 2022, 16 misdemeanors, we had 12 in 2022, eight infractions, we had eight infractions in 2022. We had 35 warnings this year, and 40 in 2022.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
That's all I've got.
Thank you. Okay. Doug?
Yes.
Welcome, Doug.
Thank you. Well, just, you know, guys have been busy. We've got the alleys cut back, and we've been patching several roads, and we are now working on alleys, trying to get our alleys patched and everything. Working hard at the cemetery, keeping all the sticks, and even started patching roads out there.
I drove through yesterday, and then today, it looked a lot better today.
Yeah, well, we had it looking good Friday until another.
Yeah, that was wicked.
So. So our shop is working on the mowers, get them ready to go. And our plan is to get started later this week too, on scoring boxes, get some of them, start getting them back out and everything.
Are we going to start cutting sod, do you know?
At the cemetery? As of the last meeting we had, we're going to continue to level them and seed and straw them. We've ordered some pretty expensive seed that Kevin wanted us to try. And I'm in the process of, oh, I can't remember, it's called spray-on seed. It's green and everything. So looking some of that up, going to get some prices, compare it to the seed and everything. But right now, our sod's not good out there. I mean, even if we cut it and try to move it, it falls apart. So we decided we're going to stay on top of the graves. Should we keep them leveled and get them seeded and strawled as soon as possible? I called around about all the cemeteries, even Rose Lawn. Rose Lawn said they don't have good enough sod to put theirs on, so they seed and straw theirs and everything, so. Yeah, I mean, if you go up front, look, you know, all the complaint, the front looks bad. It's too much shade.
Exactly.
You can't grow grass in shade. So, and then out back, I mean, it looks better, but it's still, once you cut it, it falls apart, plus you got to water, 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 and everything, so. But we are going to stay up on that and look about spray on that and see how that goes. Starting next week, two handful of guys will start their ocean tin training. That'll finish up the rest of the guys. All that'll be, starting the 13th to the 17th, two hours a day every morning.
Okay.
Majority of us will be setting through that.
Good.
So. I nearly hang, so. I couldn't tell you his.
Is that annual?
Delta, it's done.
Is it annual training?
Huh?
Is that annual? Or is it just once you go through?
No, it's just once you go through, certified.
I can direct traffic now.
Can you? No, we'll give you a call. So then we also got a couple situations that have come up. The lift station in front of Pat Scott, north, way out there, from the big factory, has a six-inch water line running through it where they're wanting to put it. So Structure Point's supposed to be contacting and finding out who's going to pay the expense to have that water line moved. So we found that last week when they called in locates.
Gosh, how many years have we been working on this? After more than a quarter million of engineering.
Yeah. And then on Harris Street, about a year ago, if you remember, we hired price to dig that up. It has collapsed. Something's in it. We can see it up in there, and we don't know if the pipe has collapsed further back. So we're going to have to get something, we can't dig it, it's too deep.
Last year?
Yeah, about a year ago.
Like on?
Harris Street, right there, Virginia and Harris.
East of me.
Yep.
Because.
Part of that started flooding again Friday. Not as bad, but it was still draining. But it come out, I've got pictures. Very little was coming out the pipe, and it was coming about five feet down from the top. Shoot mountain, it's washed out a bunch. I can call price. I really recommend before we go any further on that is, I don't know what the cost would be is, but we probably need to camera that. That is tin whistle. Chances are, it's probably rotten. So if we pay them to come and do it again, and only go back so far, who knows if it won't collapse again? So we probably ought to camera that and just see how bad it is. We may have to go all the way to the road, or. You know what I mean? I mean, it probably cost a pretty good chunk last year. Well, if we do it again another year, have it collapse. So I recommend we get a camera in before we do.
Do we, do you do that then?
I'll call around and see if I can find some other camera that'll come in and do it. We have that small camera, but it's too small.
I'll make a motion to get a camera for whatever.
You know, I would look and see before we go in.
Wasn't that what Miller's doing?
I don't know if they're doing that area though.
Miller is doing.
Yeah, they're on my street today.
Yeah.
They're on Harris.
They're, they're.
They're supposed to be sharing all of that. Would they be doing that area for that project?
Well, that is, that is, this is storm sewer, they're going to sewers.
Okay. Can we just censor in the area, just see if they'll do it as a.
Well, we could ask nicely, but I don't know if they'll do it. It shouldn't be that bad a job, really, to go in. So. And then, electric department. Chair will be going to school in two weeks. We had a trailer in Friday to get him some tools, and they had needed some extra tools. I added up today, I know I didn't call around and get it, and I don't know what you guys want to set my limit at, but they did pick up tools for 86367, that he had to have so much of it to go to climbing school.
Okay, yeah.
So there wasn't a lot of time to wait, and I don't know when that guy could come back. Because he has it on the trailer and hands it to.
Did you go ahead and get it?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And then Arrowhead, for the electric department is, they need a four op wire underground, or down to like 100 foot. We can get a thousand-foot spool for $3 a foot, so it'll be $3,000 spool. Need you guys to through that.
Second.
Doug, who's that from, please?
Brownstown.
Sorry, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think that's all I got right now, unless you guys have any questions or. We're training Adam Brown to take over the cemetery someday.
Oh, good plan, transition.
You know, Marcus.
What's he got, in years too?
Yeah, probably, he can. So Adam was interested in it, so that's where he's going to be spending most of his summer.
Good.
Marcus ready to go. I guess somebody knows what's going on out here.
Good.
He's going to help with some of the computers.
Yeah, I think, I was out there the other day to talk to him about some things, and they, Marcus was actually taking him through the computer and everything, so. That'll be nice, I'm not going to have to. We needed it, it's long past.
I think as we move forward to with that deed stuff, that may be some of the stuff that we can take over the computer side of things, as far as the deeds and, you know, I mean, unless he just, he wants to be actively participating in that aspect of it. But that is something that Mandy knows more about that program than I do, but that's something that we can sure help out on, if we need to.
Well, that'd be great, plus he probably needs to know how to.
Yeah, yeah, just to know.
It's all going to be.
When the office isn't, and if you needed to.
Yeah, I mean, I really think they're only utilizing that to print off those deeds. We'd have to come here for second terms anyway.
Not letting people pick up funds that way.
But if that's something simple, but, but he could still do that. He still needs to know how to operate that side of things though, too.
Good.
So, any questions?
I don't have any.
Oh, and, I'm sorry, is there a limit? I know there is a limit, but where, before I need to call.
I think it was $5,000, wasn't it?
2,500.
2,500. 2,500.
By the way.
Is that, that's what yours is, isn't it?
Yeah.
Do you want to just go ahead and let's just document that for motion?
Make the motion.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, UMAC?
I have a quote for a BBC pump and equipment to install homicides on the three small lift stations. We have them on the big lift stations, but we don't have a lot of small ones. This is something that Rogers R. requested. It's kind of, let me give us an idea of where infiltration's coming from, as we moved forward on that project, and it was $9,453, so.
We don't, the homicide's only on three, and we still have one big one that doesn't have it.
That's going to do them all, that should be, that's the finished old ones that we don't have, so.
36 East doesn't have one.
So we will have homicides on all of them.
Make a motion. Motion to approve.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know.
I'm surprised we didn't have one there already.
Only guys away?
We have no idea.
How many, so, how many do we have them on now, the big ones?
Three, you said.
Three.
Three large? Call them large?
Virginia, Strawberry Round, and Billbury.
Okay, and then what will that include then? We'll pick up, how many?
And Rainbow. And then there's a little one over on Sycamore. It's one little pump, and it's got the screw-in type fuses and everything still over there.
I'm not sure if they were going to put on that one or not, but.
I don't, I probably wouldn't.
I think it's just those other three, so.
Okay.
You guys have?
Now we have to do something about the infiltration, because Friday, I had a, we have a 1.1 million gallon plant, I had 4.5 billion going through it. And even this morning, I still have almost 2 million going through it. It hadn't rained since Friday.
It was a lot of rain.
It was a lot of rain.
So still almost 2 million gallons going through that plant right now.
Jeez.
We've got to do something about that.
You have the, everything else that you needed, though. There was a quote from BBC on.
I think that was the only one, yeah.
Something, but was this, was the transfer switch for you down there as well? I took care of something with Dave.
That was an old one, but yeah.
Okay, all right.
We have BBC coming.
Yeah, they were just coming today, right?
They canceled today, they'll be here next Monday.
Okay.
But that's a ID card or whatever out on 36 L.
Sycamore was out today. We had a control panel, hundred brake or on a control panel, a bad.
Okay.
Don't know about that, so.
Okay.
They came out today or through that.
It is.
It is.
Well, that will be something this asset management plan will help with, because what that does is also give you life expectancy on all of the big pieces for your wastewater system, and so, and expected expense, and you can start planning a little bit more about replacement and timing and things.
Most of what we have is online support.
There were a few things.
Yeah, that's for sure. I mean, there's been a lot of updates, but the main infrastructure is 47 years old, so.
You guys have anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any old business? Any new business? Did we have anything? Did we have something?
Public, could be public comments.
Oh, okay.
There's nothing for new business.
No new business, public comments.
That's what I would do.
Paying?
Yeah, I'd like to find out about my application. I mean, did they ever decide or make a decision, or? I've been working around my schedule for a year now, and I was told they had full, four full-time positions, and I had two people come in and tell me, hey, why don't you go put your application in? So I never got an interview, I was never told anything. Had anybody ever decided whether I could continue to work around my schedule, or why I couldn't, or? I was, even during the cover bridge, they let me work 10 to 7:30 every day. I worked every, I have never missed a day of work. I've never taken a vacation. I've never been late to work. Even when these two guys were off sick, Jeff said, hey, can you come in and work? I came in and worked. I worked when Allen was on vacation. I didn't get on-call fed. I, I mean, I don't miss work. You can look at my time cards, I've never missed work.
I don't think that, I don't, I thought, didn't realize there was an issue. Did I miss, was there an email?
So I, I wanted to know, is there, I was working 32 hours a week, lots of 8 and 1 hours. I mean, and I've been willing to work anytime they've ever called and said, hey, can you work? Is there any way possible they will continue to work around my bus schedule, or not?
Now, are you speaking of, things have changed obviously in the last week or so? So are you, are you speaking of, I know you applied when they were advertising for full-time positions. Those positions have been filled? So with that being said, are you still interested in the seasonal work? Or, I mean, is that your?
No, I just want to know, how's, I, I'm interested in the seasonal work.
Okay.
But when the full-time positions came open, and I was the first one to put my application in, how's come I was never contacted? That's what I want to know.
And I don't know that anybody at the table has an answer to that right now, with things that have transpired.
So is it possible to work full-time and work, keep, continue to work around my bus schedule? I was work, what I was doing, what they was, he was letting me do was come in as soon as my bus route was over at 8:15, and work up until 2:30, and then I was coming back and working forward at 8, or 8:30.[1773.87] then I was coming back and working four to eight, or eight thirty. And if, and if there was anything else that needed to be done or help catch up, he was letting me come in on a half-day Saturday.
Well, where we sit now, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but those, those full-time positions have been filled. So according to our salary ordinance, we don't currently have a full-time position open. So is that correct?
No.
We will have or potentially have maybe two seasonal for the summer if.
Is that what we budgeted for?
If you decide to move forward with, you know, still withholding those. So that's, that's why I'm asking. I don't think anybody has an answer as far as why you weren't contacted about the full-time, but.
So does anybody have a conflict if you're working full-time then? Or working around my bus?
We don't have, we don't have that open.
But when you did, is there, is there a reason? I mean, is there a conflict there?
Not, I mean, at the time, not to my knowledge. I think the only concern was that you don't want, if you set that precedent, then you've got a lot of other employees saying, well, hey, I'll work six to eight and then come back and work three to nine or it.
Exactly.
If you set the precedent.
But nobody else is working two jobs or has, has been. And I've never seen anybody denied time off, never. If, if one of them has went in there and said, hey, I need to leave early or need time off, I've never seen one of them denied time off or have to come in late or leave early. There's no difference. If he, he has to leave and go to school at nine o'clock or take somebody to the doctor, none of them's ever been denied to take off half-day or two hours early or come in two hours late. None of them.
I think that's a different situation.
Yeah, but we don't.
Being hired, being hired and that. Yeah, I mean, I think that just, we're not going to deny somebody a, a time off or a break if they need it. But I think just going into things. But right now we don't have a full-time position available. We potentially have the seasonal positions that I think the council's interested in bringing back. Now, whether you're interested in that or not, I don't know, but.
Anybody have anything else?
Do we, do we budget for the two part-time positions then? Is that in this year's budget? Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think there's two. I, I mean, I have to look at my ordinance again, but I think there's just the two is what we.
Okay.
Seasonal, which Doug and I talked about a little bit the other day.
About possible starting times.
Do they usually start in April?
Uh, I think a lot of times in April, Mark wants to wait till May on his. So we have him later in the year with the leaves. So cemetery, we're looking probably not till May unless something changes. Of course Rodney, if that's who they go with, is available. If we called him tomorrow until he come, he'd be here.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we just have to decide when we're going to.
Depending on where you're at with scheduling and stuff too, when you need somebody.
Yep.
So.
Right now with no mowing, we don't really need anybody just yet until grass starts greening up and then we do.
Shouldn't be any time.
Yeah. So we've been sending a crew into the park picking up sticks and taking care of the trash. So until we start mowing, we really don't need anybody.
Okay. And I don't know who cleaned the sidewalk up through here a couple weeks ago, but I appreciate them. There were several leaves and everything all the way up through the sidewalk. And I noticed one day coming in that it had all been cleaned up. So I don't know who did it, but it was nice. So thank you. They may.
Well, they might.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?